Want to wear tatties?
Yeah, I'll go.
Good evening. It's 5 o'clock. We're going to call to order the meeting of June 24th, 2024, regularly scheduled meeting of the Mont Eagle Mayor and Alderman Meeting. We'll start with prayer. Dan Sargent, please.
Yes. Praying. Our Father, again this afternoon, we thank you for the opportunity to meet together as a Board of Alderman and Mayor. We thank you for the business that's before us, asking that you'd help us to make the right decisions and continue to guide us. We thank you again for the privilege of living in a little community like we do and enjoy the community that is ours to live in. We just thank you for that and ask that you'd bless our evening and we commit it to you alone in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's faith.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord and the United States of America and to your love for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote for, vote please. Uh, I'm sorry, vote for.
Here.
Just here.
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 Here. You have received the minutes in your packet. I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes submitted for May 20th, 2024.
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes submitted? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes of May 20th are approved. Now a motion for the minutes of June 12th, 2024, the regularly, no, that was a special call meeting, excuse me, June Waiting a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes, make a motion to approve the minutes of June 12th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Citizens' comments? Anyone wishing to be heard at this time? Mayor's communications. I do have a couple of things this evening. First, we're not at the stage of a water drought plan, or as they say, pulling any of the triggers that's in the drought plan, but I would ask you to think about cooperating now. We haven't had rain in the past so many days, except for last night. I don't know when it's going to rain again of any consequence. The rainfall we had came to a quarter of an inch last night from what I was told by our water plant people, so it wasn't enough really, as they say, to make a dent. Right now with summer activities and the Assembly fully occupied and the different camps at Swanee and Tracy City's tiny homes, there's an increased demand, of course, during the summer, August being one of the highest months, March being one of the lowest months. So just in passing, if we could start conserving water, I think everyone would appreciate it. There'll be a special called meeting on July 16th to continue our work on the ordinances and the regularly scheduled meeting will be July 29th at 5 o'clock. So that's that. Now, we're going to have a parade July 4th. We're going to form up at 9 o'clock and start at 10:00. We're changing locations again. We're going to meet at the flea market across from the McDonald's area, not this one down here by the post office, the other one down there where the Japanese food truck is set up. I'm working with the owner to get access and proper signage and we'll probably exit the flea market onto Catherine Street and come up by CVS. So, but we'll be getting that word out as time goes on. We have scheduled the Shriners Club of Jeep Drivers or Jeep Owners and a motorcycle group that we finally found was happy to display the flag several July 4ths ago before my term, but they're there and they're going to come with their motorcycle group. I understand it's a Christian-based group out of Tullahoma. So they're happy to participate. Again, they were in previous parades and they said they'd be happy to do this one. So now I understand there has been some traffic about my comment about sirens. I worry about all the citizens, seniors, babies, even pets, even people with hearing aids. So what I've tried to do is to say, please be mindful of those as you toot your siren or horn. I'm not sure we need a blast that lasts two to three minutes. I'm sure a little wail of the siren wouldn't bother too many people, but in the past, some fire departments, not necessarily ours, would hit the horn that for many considered a prolonged period. So I just ask for some consideration. I'm sure there'll be sirens and horns and all that, but I think we need to be mindful of the viewing audience. So that was my comment and intent on sirens. I'm not prepared to discount that part of the population and tell them to stay home. That someone suggested once. So just be mindful and I know the Mont Eagle Fire Department and the Mont Eagle Police Department understand that and if they can spread the word to other participating companies, that'd be fine. So those are my comments for that. Hopefully the weather will hold and we'll have a good July 4th. The fireworks will start, of course, at dark. Mont Eagle Volunteer Fire Department will be running the concession stand. Food trucks seem to be at a premium, so there won't be any food trucks, from what I understand, this year, but the Volunteer Fire Department will be happy to do what they can at the concession stand. So having said all of that, let's go with reports. Police Department?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, citizens of Mont Eagle.
Good afternoon.
We'll make this, the report part fairly quick because I've got a few things I want to say. As you can see, the numbers are where we really want them to be. We had one aggravated assaults. We had two drug-related cases, which, if you guys can remember, those were really high at one time. And those have definitely come down mainly because of the K-9. So, and of course, the officers that we currently do have that are better educated in how to patrol for that certain activity. So thefts are coming down. They're basically, they're basically still the copper safe, you know, private property. You know, we haven't had any thefts, not on the way of cars or homes in quite some time, but you know, I've tried to do what I can, but that is private property. It's not gated. The witness is gated and secured. The witness is secured. And trying to speak to the owners of that facility is almost impossible. So citations are down tremendously. Most of those were warnings, warning citations to tell them to slow down. And because we are training, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to train our new cadets in traffic. So, and with the summertime, people are vacationing. We are going to see an influx of vehicles, more people. So obviously we're going to, you know, employ people to slow down. And if they have deceit of the law to do that, then so be it. That's what's going to happen. Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get tickets. So, total number of calls coming to the call center was 215, which is down considerable. The total number of crashes that we've had went up slightly. Most of those are still, you know, are 18-wheelers, backed into other vehicles and things of that nature. No major citizens' crashes or anything like that. So we're very pleased to say that. Now, the other two things that I'm going to bring up, Frere County Sheriff's Department executed an arrest warrant on a male subject with our assistance because it was here in Mont Eagle at the Mountain Inn. They did a steam child predators, I guess what I'm going to say. So this male subject was arrested on charges of sexual exploitation of a minor, scheduled two drugs, which, if I'm not mistaken, I think was methamphetamines and drug poisoning. So you'll see a lot more of that kind of activity making the news, hopefully not here in Mont Eagle, but we're like any other, any other town. We're not, you know, above having that kind of activity. So when we do have the opportunity to take care of it, we take care of it as swiftly as we possibly can. And in this case, we did. So I can say that the Sheriff's Department did a great job on their case building this because we wallowed in that. The other thing that I'll bring up is, is quite sad. Suicide. We had a young lady who took her own life on the 30th of last month here in Mont Eagle. She was a Mont Eagle resident, okay? Don't need to mention her name. And while going through her phone, she had signs. She reached out to people, not necessarily with her family, unfortunately. So the reason I'm bringing this up is, most of you may or may not know that you can dial 988, okay? Text 988. That is automatically going to get you in touch with the crisis hotline, okay? Also, you can also dial 1-888-333-2377. And it's very important that we remember that number and we give it out to people because family members could be going through a hard time, friends, and they shouldn't even have to resort to taking their own one.
What's that number again?
1-888-333-2377. That's anonymous, you know, and also too, it is 24-hour late prevention service. It's a very important number to remember. The other thing that I want to bring up is the purchase of some body worn cameras that we desperately need. And I would like to take that out of the line item to purchase about five cameras this year. So that's going to be initial $17,000 is what's going to be initially here. So.
I'm sorry, the amount was how much?
$17,000.
That we can move within your department?
Correct.
I'll accept a motion to authorize that expenditure on behalf of the Police Department request.
How much is it?
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
We get a, this'll hit competitive bidding, right?
Yeah, it was. So basically, we went through Axon, which is a great company, very expensive. And there's only two right now that you can get cameras for, and that's Motorola or Axon. Motorola is a great company and they, they outdid Axon by quite a bit. So the Axon cameras would have ran us probably about 40-plus thousand, but there's other features that we necessarily don't need because we don't have the capability of driving up and get automatically uploading into our mainframe. So they don't have a lesser camera system for that for us, so.
But your requesting meets your needs as a Mont Eagle Police Department?
It does, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Lauren?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We'll get on that.
And Marlon, I would like to say that I had a visit from two of your officers the other morning at 2:00. As they were doing their patrols, they smelled propane really strong right out in my front yard. Although it scared me that, you know, my doorbell rings at 2:00 in the morning. They were very professional and I was really grateful that they, they stopped. They could have went on down the road, you know?
Yes, ma'am. And you know, it's what I call positive policing. You know, that's what we want to do, community policing, is you don't necessarily have to arrest people taking drugs. That's just a byproduct of what we do. Showing up is more important than some other things.
How are your staffing levels? I think last time we talked, you were, you had some openings.
So currently, right now, staffing is completely full. I was actually going to bring them in here tonight, but my uniform, my new uniforms didn't come in. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to do that. But I'm very confident, our next town hall meeting we have, they will be in our new uniform so that all of you guys and citizens can see the officers that we do have. They're actually looking forward to seeing the guys.
I met Shirley.
Yes, ma'am. Miss Shirley, Officer Shirley.
Super nice lady.
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. Glad to hear you're fully staffed again.
We are. And thank you, guys. We would not be there without you guys. So thank you.
Any other questions for the police chief?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So 24 calls for service for the month of June so far. We have two new members, actually two new female members that just completed their 60-hour intruder emergency services and they're looking to start their basic required state firefighter for the 64 hours. So that's, that's a positive influence for us. And the new cascade system is installed and in operation, finally. That has been awarded as 100% grant through the VP program to the State Fire Marshal's Office and has replaced in that 26-year-old system. So we're super excited about that. That'll serve us well. We've been back on the hydrant maintenance kick. We've been painting and exercising hydrants on the east side of town right now. The utilities department has a few hydrants on their list that they're completely removing and replacing due to interior dilatation. One of those hydrants I know is on Fifth Street, on the corner of Fifth and King, I believe. That one's scheduled for a complete pullout and reinstall. They're also putting an isolator valve in, some stuff with the old water system. But, so that's going to be a brand-new hydrant put in. The old hydrant will actually be taken back to the shop and they'll go through it, put new parts and stuff and see if they can update that and get it back repairable as a replacement hydrant. So that's a good program there. And we've used about 18,000 gallons for the month of June. That's about all I have for the Fire Department side. Any questions?
Any questions? The Fire Chief, before we go to building? Thank you. Thank you. Yelson?
On the building side, six building inspections has been performed, two building permit applications been received for residential builds, and I've assisted on two different site plans with code requirements for submission to the planning commission. I think they've also been working on set D and stuff on that. So been back and forth on that. That's on two commercial builds. Looking forward to it. Any questions on the building permitting side?
Okay.
For codes enforcement for the month, we've got one follow-up for the end of the month for legal RV living within the city limits. New complaint received in review for a commercial business and also I think we've got to turn it on here, but served four papers for yard maintenance, high grass, weeds, stuff like that. It's that time of year. A lot of times coming around. That'll come up at the end of the month. Here another way to go, or review over them and see where that stands.
Okay. Any questions on ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation Beautification, Martha Anne.
Is it, I don't think it's on. Is it on?
I think so.
It didn't have full battery when I checked it, so it may have died. You want to?
Okay. I'll speak up. Beautification has two projects we wanted to make everyone aware of. One, Christmas, I know it's, we're just getting to the 4th of July, but we have to plan ahead for Christmas. And we talked about having a Christmas tree lighting. And that usually involves a huge tree that you have to purchase. And we don't have the funds for that. So we came up with the idea of smaller Christmas trees, five, six, seven feet Christmas trees in a row in the, what do we call the, a green trail?
Greenway.
Over the, yeah, the greenway. What we are proposing is that we limit it to 20 trees this year. And anyone who wants to decorate a tree can, businesses, individuals, churches, anybody who wants to decorate one. We will turn all of those lights and all of the lights that the city puts up in the greenway on at the same time at a ceremony. We haven't yet decided when to do that, but we want to do, well, yes, we do. We want to do it the day after Thanksgiving so that when IVA is publicizing what's going on on the mountain, that we can be included in that and hopefully get visitors to come to the city and go to restaurants and whatever and get us some more tax income. So we're going to do that for Christmas. Then we have another project, and that is the elementary school needs a new sign. I don't know if that new, but it's embarrassing to see their sign. So we want to raise the funds to purchase an electric sign, a digital sign fancier than the one out here for the city. We need to get a new one for the city, but that's another day. So, and we want to decorate, not decorate it, just fit the sign inside the stones like are used everywhere else in the city. And we want to brand this, Nate, as one of the first projects of Imagine Mont Eagle. So you're going to be hearing more about it. We've got to do fundraising and you'll be hearing more about that and asking you to help us purchase that. And we sure could use new members. So on IVA's publicity, we could use more members for the tree board and for the beautification. I hope you've noticed the flowers along the greenway that we put those up and I think they're looking mighty pretty. So any questions?
Well, let me get to one point. I'm calling it a master blast. I'm calling it an e-blast. This is a process that Iva, Michelle, and Martha Anne have been working on as part of the communication. We tried the Facebook town Facebook page. We tried the website page. Now we're adding to that. Those that want emails, we're adding emails. So make sure, A, you get them your email addresses. You can drop it off at Town Hall and we'll get it to them. Part one. Part two is you can put in what you want and they can decide on that and contact you if there are questions, but there will also be a town section. We're fashioning this much after Swanee Classifieds. Swanee police use it if there's a road closure or if there's some kind of problem somewhere with a tree down or an accident or whatever. So town announcements will also be on what I'm calling the master e-blast communication. But you can also put in if you're selling your lawnmower, your refrigerator, whatever, but Iva, Michelle, and Martha Anne can handle that part.
And we're calling it Mont Eagle Classifieds so, to help people see, oh, this is similar to Swanee, but it relates only to Mont Eagle. So we want the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Water Department, whoever has something that the citizens need to know about, to post. And all you have to do is go to monteagle-classifieds and it will come up as Google groups and then you post whatever you want to say.
The town will want, excuse me, what's that? The town will want to review whatever it puts out officially as the town. The other part goes to Martha Anne or, I'm sorry, Grant?
Is that, is this going to be like a Facebook hosted platform, on the platform, or is this just email?
It's just email.
This was an answer to, I don't check the website. I'm not on Facebook. So we look for another means of communication. To an earlier point, I think it was yours, Grant, is some kind of control or centralized. My concern is the town. Whatever goes on for the town will come from Town Hall. Everything else, fortunately, we have two volunteers that are taking on this massive project. So thank you both for that. Anything else? Iva, Michelle, just in case. You're all good. Okay. Thank you. Grant?
One more question. Both of you, actually. Nate, do you have any idea if the, the report that we'll get from AIA, if it's going to have any kind of recommendations for like signage ordinance and/or examples of signage for, potentially for the town?
Well, I'll just say, I don't know, but I got an email from Erin a couple of hours ago saying that she thought it would be ready this week. So, so we won't have to wait long, hopefully.
I was just thinking about your sign. I think it's a great idea for Swanee Elementary. Let's make sure that that, if it's going to be the first, sorry, Mont Eagle Elementary, would be the first, if this is the first kind of AIA project, then let's try to make it kind of fit into what they're, what they're talking about from the reports.
And we'd have to get Mont Eagle Elementary.
Oh, we're working directly with the principal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that would go through the, the board.
I think they initiate. I think the principal initiated the project.
Okay, great.
Anything else? That's it? Any questions, Alderman? Okay. Thank you very much, Martha Anne. Okay. I can address the next three. The utility manager. John is out tonight and he will not be attending. The street department, I can comment on very briefly. Payne Avenue is getting developed. They want to put a food court there. The Wander Brew of Ice Cream and Coffee has already opened there. It'll probably see more traffic as they develop the 21 condominium units as you go down Moffett Street, so to speak, from Main Street. And also, who else is there? And the school uses it quite a bit, especially as they dismiss at the end of the day. So what I would like to do is find out our boundaries. Travis and AJ have been working on getting surveys at least so we can start a line. And then once we establish the right of way for the street, we align it and put the stop sign in the proper place. So that's work that has to be done with Payne Avenue and that food court concept. You may have seen the sign that it's coming, so we want to be prepared for that. Planning Commission, and Dan, stop me if I say this wrong.
No meeting.
There was no meeting. The town planning commission had not granted them permission to put up a convenience store in the area of the rest area, not rest area, flea market across from the post office. So they applied for a VZA meeting. One was scheduled. The VZA, they withdrew their VZA application, so there was no meeting. So we'll see how that develops, if they come back or if they have a different concept. So that's basically. Anything else from planning, Dan?
Yeah.
So that, Martha?
Good question. I don't understand why we can't just say to Dollar General, we don't need two Dollar Generals in our town. Why can't we do that?
We can, and that's one of the things that we're going to do a workshop on July 2nd, before the planning commission meeting. There's some confusion, my part is, what is C2, what is C3, what is allowed, what is not allowed? I think when the ordinances and the zoning are refined, we'll be in a lot better position to say that, number one. Number two, it was, they got bogged down, quite frankly, in my opinion, as to definition. Is it a convenience store? And then as some people asked, is that retail or commercial? So you go on and on into these things. Some people think a convenience store only applies if it's accompanied by a gas station. But some of us have come up with examples where a gas station was nowhere around and they had a convenience store. So we'll just see how it develops. But yes, as the zoning ordinances get refined, we will be in a lot better position to say that. Okay. Alderman report, Terrane?
I don't have anything, but you did mention the condos. What's the latest on that?
Nothing yet. They've been working with. They've been working with Travis Wilson on their water and sewer, and they have to make a few corrections. One of the conditions was that TDEC was satisfied with their filings, and I think they've just about gotten all of TDEC approval, so we'll wait to hear from them. But last I heard, they were still working on it and doing their engineering.
So did they have to come back before the planning commission did?
I don't think so. If they meet the conditions and Southeast Tennessee Development, our representative there, Jonathan Rush, says that they've complied, then I think they can move forward. So, Katie?
I thought that their plans were sitting in your office and we were waiting for somebody to come and sign something, and I can't sign it.
Well, there's, yes, but there's also been recent conversation, they want to get some of the water sewer engineering satisfied as well. So when that is ready, we'll obviously proceed. Sure.
I didn't know about that.
Okay. Okay, Jessica?
I don't have anything, but I would be curious to know too about the Marriott Hotel.
Marriott and DeBose and Hampton have all contacted me at various stages. Marriott and DeBose are getting prices from their contractors, subcontractors to start work, still presumably late summer. Hampton has recently contacted me, they're talking about out parcels as well as the Hampton being an anchor, so to speak, for that area. And there again, it's all utilities, that's one of the reasons for the ordinance we pass soon tonight. Travis Wilson, our engineer, gets a lot of phone calls, and we've been paying those bills. And now with this new ordinance, we hope that the developer can start paying some of those bills, not dollar for dollar or minute by minute, but at least some kind of offsetting fee. Because he'll get a question, then he may have to go back and revisit, so there's a basic fee and then a fee for revisiting a site. So we'll get to that when it comes up as an ordinance, but that's basically where they're at. They know, I mean, when you deal with people like Marriott and the DeBose folks and the Hampton folks, they know what they have to do, they know where TDEC is and all the other agencies they have to deal with. So when they're ready, they told me they'll certainly get back to me, and we'll see. Dan?
I'd just like to commend our police department and the fire department and all the things they've been able to accomplish recently and the hard work they're continuing to do that we don't always see out front, but we see the results of it. And also, it's a good thing we're being able to move forward with the INI problem with the sewer system that causes us to show adverse readings with our INI in the sewer system, and I think having that corrected is going to make a real difference for us to be able to move forward with the positive development.
Thank you, that's great. Nate?
First, let me apologize to everybody that we don't have this screen up so you can see what we're voting on, but we've got an outlet problem here, so I couldn't get my computer to power up. I think last month, we talked about a tree board and we passed a little resolution authorizing that, and that was anticipation of applying for a grant with the beautification board that I thought was due July 1st, and I sent Martha a note last week. It hasn't even opened yet, so you, we will hear more about that and how that grant comes together, they just, the state is delayed in getting that open. And as I mentioned earlier to Grant, Erin emailed earlier today and said that the plan is almost ready. She said they just, they ended up having actually a lot of content that didn't even make it into the, into the presentation, so they're pretty excited about it. So hopefully by the end of this week, once that comes out, I'll be talking to the mayor about how best to distribute it, to get some comments about it, because I think that we want to all make sure that it reflects those who participated in the process, it reflects what you guys and gals were thinking. So I'll probably be working with Martha and maybe set up an online survey, but certainly want to get that out, and then we really want to move into implementation phase. So I know a lot of people have been reaching out saying, okay, great, these guys were here, now what's next? Let's not lose our momentum. And, and so hopefully we can really start to get some things rolling once they have sort of laid out some directions for us. I've been anxiously awaiting that, so excited, excited that it's on the way.
Okay. One thing that, back to the parade real quick to pick up what Dan mentioned, just for information, the grand marshals of the parade this year are the police chief and fire department chief representing their different departments for the work that they do and in recognition of that. Okay, in old business, we have the second reading of ordinance 08-24 recreational vehicles. I'll accept a motion to accept it on the second reading, and if there's discussion, we'll discuss the motion. So is there a motion on 08-24 to discuss recreational vehicles?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 08-24 recreational vehicles on the second reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. This is in your packet, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 08-24 is approved. Second reading of ordinance 09-24, the year-end adjustments prepared by our CPA. Our fiscal year, as you know, ends June 30th. This also is in your packet, so this is the second reading of this one. Is there a motion to accept 09-24?
Move to accept motion 09-24.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? It's been laid out pretty well and self-explanatory. Any discussion?
Lauren?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, and under old business, the last item is the second reading of 24-25 budget, which is forwarded to the comptroller once it's approved. So is there a motion to accept the 24-25 budget?
Move to accept the 24-25 budget as written.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or further comment on this budget? Hearing none, then it'll be forward to the comptroller's office. Roll call vote, please.
Lauren?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Under new business, I've prepared in cooperation with Travis Wilson and TDEC, an updated version of the drought plan that we have. This will be put into a comprehensive package with Tracy City, Swanee, and Big Creek, what to do in case of a drought. So it's a resolution, it follows the guidelines that TDEC wanted. We've all agreed on the quantity, or, you know, the quantity and quality in the lake for our water resource and cooperation with the other water utilities. So this also is in your packet. It's not significant changes other than the updating dates that TDEC wanted and a few other items. So is there a motion to accept the resolution 02-24, the drought plan?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call is not needed, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. First reading of ordinance 10-24, increased court costs. This was based on some research done by the court clerk and our police department, and it seems that it puts us more in line with other municipalities. So for the first reading of ordinance 10-24, a motion to accept that on the first reading?
I'll move to, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the first reading?
What is our current court cost?
123?
123, increases about $25.
Okay. Roll call vote is needed for the first reading of the ordinance 10-24?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
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 Yes. And the final item is the first reading of ordinance 11-24, building permit fees. A touch of history on this, which I'm sure the Aldermen from previous administrations are aware. The building inspector at the time, Mr. Earl Gary, proposed these charges and following the date in the building code as it stood, there was agreement, but no ordinance was formalized. So we're formalizing that as well as adding review fees for Travis Wilson when he's contacted to comment on water and sewer engineering. So that's ordinance 11-24. I'll accept a motion on the first reading to accept that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance on the first reading of 11-24 building permit fees.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would like for Travis to explain to the citizens what that entails.
So this ordinance is kind of much needed for the town. The previous, there wasn't an ordinance, so the previous that we had done to handle building permit fees come under Appendix L of the International Residential Code. And all this is a fee schedule that shows the justification for permit cost, by percentage of the job, you know, whatever the figures was on the valuations. That had never been adopted into an ordinance form for the town. So this is pushing that forward to actually take that same Appendix L, the same dollar amount, and put this over into the form of an ordinance for, you know, just for the liability and legalities of the town, if that makes sense. So in doing this, this fee, I'll just go a little farther if that's all right with you. This fee in doing this was, a study was done with the neighboring communities, right? So there was, there were four or five of them in this kind of study that was done by the legal side of the town, and the results of that comes back to this same appendix schedule, this Appendix L. Some of these prices were lower than what we were charging, some of these prices were higher than what we were charging, right? So we was just accustomed to the Appendix L of this, and a lot of the towns that was cheaper than, lower than where we were at, has a city tax in place. So there's something to kind of start to move us along in some kind of value that we're covering for all the, I don't know, inside. If that makes sense?
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
I was waiting on the discussion here.
What happened?
Okay. Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
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 Yes. And I thank you for that. We've accomplished a lot. The special call meeting in July will continue this process because, quite frankly, we're updating and reviewing, and as things come to the fore, we want to address them instead of putting them over. Also submitted at the July special call meeting will be the first reading of a stormwater ordinance that we've been working on, which I'll address further at that meeting.
Are those the two items on the agenda, the second reading of this?
Well, we'll itemize those and also the first reading of stormwater, and I think there may be one or two more, but we'll get the agenda out and do that. Okay. Alderman, any questions? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.